This is a Planning Board Hybrid Meeting for June 23, 2025. It's at 5:00 PM. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the Chair. No hands raised. Pursuant to the Governor Healy's March 28, 2025 signing of Chapter Two of the Acts of 2025, extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during a state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until June 30, 30th, 2027, this meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 508-945-4410, conference ID 424-924-325, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, Xfinity Channel 1072, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. So I'd like to begin with a roll call. Catherine Huprin.
Present.
Warren Chain.
Present.
Bob Worschafter.
Present.
Frank Shear.
Present.
Bob Dubus.
Present.
I believe Charlene Greenhall is absent today, and Art Spru, I am present. And we'll begin with the review of the minutes from June 9, 2025. Are there any comments from any of the board members? I have one. It's on page four, four lines above where a public comment is. It says, "Mr. Spru also requests developers consider..." It says, "impervious parking spaces where practical, it should be pervious." So that's all. Other than that, everything else was fine. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So both.
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Catherine?
I approve.
Warren?
Approve.
Bob Worschafter?
Approve.
Frank Shear?
Approve.
Abdulis?
Approve.
And Art Spru, I approve. All right. A pre-application for Cedar Street Pump Station. This is Town Chairman of DPW. And if you could introduce yourself and the project?
Good evening. My name is Jeff Gregg from GHD Inc. We're a consultant for the Town of Chatham, presenting on this project. And we wanted to come in and do the pre-application conference to talk about the site that we're proposing on Cedar Street for a new municipally-operated pumping station to serve the wastewater treatment expansion that we're working on for the implementation of basically the town's approved plan for nutrient removal. A bit new to the pre-meeting conference, so wherever you'd like me to go, I could give you an idea of... Do you want me to... I think Christine was going to bring up the site plan, and I could walk you...
I think she's working on it right now. There we go. If you could blow it up, that'd be great.
Can you show us?
So this is a very small location. The entire square footage is roughly about 3,800 square feet. The actual area that will be disturbed is somewhere in the 20... or sorry, that will have the final station on it will be about 22 to 2,800 square feet. This site is located on Cedar Street, and it includes... It's on a triangular-shaped parcel that the town owns. It is within the delineated wetland, so we are going to be going through a lot of permitting for this site. This is at the... Basically, at the bottom of the hill as you're coming down from downtown, down Cedar Street. It will be on the... Basically, the north side of the road. And we're looking at a Gorman Rupp suction lift-type pumping station with a fiberglass enclosure, so it'll be similar in statute to the facilities we have at George Ryder, Queen Anne, Meadowview. It will have a generator located on the property, some electrical enclosures. Right now, we're looking at adding a retaining wall because we have to adjust grade in the location. Then we have to do lots of restoration with regards to landscaping in the wetlands, which will be through a lot of the permitting with conservation. We're going to be filing with Army Corps as well. We will need zoning board. We'll need a zoning board variance for a lot of our parcels, a lot of our setbacks. So this is the proposed rough landscaping plan. The generator's located here. It's about 20 feet off of the roadway. The pumping station wet well is here. It's about 10 feet off of the property line. We're proposing a... Sorry, a privacy fence. Trying to think of the words. Along this side, along the roadside, and then up a portion of the east side of the property, and then chain link fence around the back with the landscaping going around and trying to fill as much of the gap as we can between the road and the adjacent properties and also in the area that we're disturbing of the wetland. We're calling for... These are the concrete porous pavers. We'll probably be filling them with stone as opposed to grass. And then we also have what would be like a GeoWeb-type plastic material that would be a grassed area that would give them additional area to be able to drive a vehicle on, but it wouldn't be a paved surface or impervious surface. Impervious surface. There's a small two-foot apron along the front edge as it comes on paved to tie into the road just at the edge of the property. There's a buried underground electrical duct bank that will come off the pole that's located here on Cedar Street that would run back to power the main panels, and then it would feed the station from there. The retaining wall in the back is about three feet high. It's not a lot of fill, but it's still more than we'd like to be able to do. The wetland boundary runs right along this edge and then curves down and basically follows that line. We have overhead power lines that we're working, so we had to be set back into the property so that we could set our wet well. We wanted to keep the generator as close to the road as possible for maintenance purposes. We tried to compact the parcel as much as we could. I believe the area that's within the wetland that would be permanently disturbed is about 1,800 square feet plus or minus. I apologize. I don't have all the numbers off the top of my head. I could look them up if desired. I don't know if I hit the main things that you'd be interested in.
I think so. Bob, why don't you start off? Any questions, comments?
Could I ask your name one more time?
Yes, Jeff Gregg.
John?
Jeff. Well, I... Sorry. John is my first name. I go...
Mr. Dubus.
You gotta turn your mic on.
Oh, shoot. You didn't bang. I know. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So my full name is John Jefferson.
That's all right. That's all right.
Yes, I go by Jeff.
Listen, we've come across these before, okay? And what you're telling us is something that we really have no control over.
Right.
All right. What we have control over is I would like to see where the road is, where it is on Cedar Street.
Okay.
So we can get a relationship to where exactly it is. You're giving us a plan. It could be anywhere.
Yep.
And I'm not... Listen, I'm not trying to... Trying to...
No, I'm making notes.
Do anything, but...
Yep.
There's no place that tells us exactly where it is.
Yep.
On Cedar Street. So could you enlighten us where it is? If you go by the Boy Scout Hall, you know where that is?
So...
That's the big white building on the corner.
We're fir... So if you're at the intersection of Cedar Street and Stage Harbor.
That's the Boy Scout Hall.
Yeah. You take that right, and you'll head up the hill.
Yep.
And then Cedar Street drops off to a low point at the very bottom of the hill by Black Duck Landing.
Now, now, see, now, that's where I would think it would have been okay, but see, nobody here, other than a couple other people, would know that that's the bottom of Cedar Street. And there's a person down there. I hope you're going to be low enough for him to use his sewer that's already installed waiting for the pump station. So please, if you come before us again, would you please give us
Yes.
A map of where it is?
Yep. I can do that. Yep, no, we can include it.
Whatever else you had on here is, to me, very adequate. They did a very good job of landscaping.
Yep.
I mean, there's only so many places you can put a pump station in this town.
Yes.
And it is in the right spot for it because it'll collect a lot of people. I hope maybe some of Skunk's neck.
Warren.
That's going to happen.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I couldn't... I don't know where Skunk's neck is exactly off of...
That's when you go to the very end of Cedar Street and you take a right.
Okay, towards Battlefield and working up the...
No, the other way.
Oh, the...
Go down Cedar Street, take a right. That's Skunk's neck. You take a left, you go Battlefield.
Yeah, that's all right. I'm sorry. I'm turned around.
Sorry. Rob Failey, Director of Public Works. So yes, that Skunk's neck area is so far geographically, it'll probably will not be picked up by this pump station unless there's low pressure that pumps to this pump station.
Okay, thank you.
I'll say, Bob?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
That's all right.
Did I ask enough questions?
Frank, we'll go with you next.
So the generator is how tall?
Well, it'll be on a... It'll be on a concrete pad, and then it's probably four feet off the ground.
Okay.
I mean, it depends on the... It depends on the grading and the size, but it's going to be very similar in layout to what you might see at... It's probably smaller than what we have down at Barn Hill or, you know, Meadowview.
And the pump station, how tall would that be?
The unit itself, I believe we're not putting the panels in it, so if we don't have the control panels in it, I believe we can get away with the six-by-six-by-six enclosure.
Okay.
If it has to have the panels in it, then it would be more like Queen Anne, so it would be taller. It'd be more like it's almost nine, I think it's eight, eight or nine feet tall.
Right. And there's going to be a fence in front?
Yep, five foot 10.
Five foot... Okay. All righty.
Below six feet.
I've seen the pump station, so I have a clear idea of what this is going to look like.
Is your mic on? Yeah, you can speak in your mic, yes.
Yes. Okay. Would it be worthwhile, perhaps it won't be, to get a visual of what it would look like from the road? I mean, it's just going to be a fence, I guess, in some pretty...
So, yes, it would... The goal would be that this would look very similar to the Meadowview Pumping Station, which has just basically a foot... Although, we may go with wood or composite. We haven't decided yet. We have to work that with the town on what material we want there, but it would be basically a fence Yep. front, and then you'll see the one little driveway access, and in this case, we'll have more plantings. We are trying to address stormwater on the road itself. We do have some of it that does collect down here right now, so we're looking at intercepting some of that stormwater, so there will be a small outfall that's going to be located here with a sediment trap, basically like a deep sump catch basin before it goes out to basically like a discharge point into the wetland.
Okay, the only other thing I would ask is, I'd like to get an idea of what the fence is going to look like.
Sure.
So, and that's it.
Okay. Bob?
I guess there's lighting on this property, so we're going to want to know what the lighting is.
So we would typically have a light, which we haven't laid out on this plan yet, but we'll have a light near the wet well so they can look into the wet well, and then we'll have a light by the generator, and then there'll probably be interior lighting on the panels. It's all by switch, so it's when the operator's out there, they can turn it on, leave it, and then they'll turn it off, as opposed to it won't be on like... Like, it won't be on sensors or anything like that, so it will be intended to be basically dark night sky light fixtures intended for operators to be able to, you know, have some light while they're out there doing work.
So if something breaks down in the middle of the night, the driver drives in with his headlights, and that's it?
No, he'll have a... He'll have a switch to light, turn on this light. He'll have a switch to turn on a light that's over by the generator, and then all the panels have...
Those are the outdoor lights we're going to...
Outdoor lights. You will have out... They will have outdoor lights on a pole, but they won't be on except for
Right.
When...
That needs to be in the plan, so...
Yep.
Okay. I guess I'm okay. This is in the floodplain, but not in the...
It's not... No, it's not in the floodplain.
Okay.
It is in the wetland.
It's in the wetland, okay.
Neither of which are... Neither of which are ideal.
You could put a driveway in there without
Yes.
Causing great difficulty for us after we stop everybody else from putting driveways in. You go ahead and put yours in, but that's fine.
Warren?
I don't think I have anything else to add. I went out looking for this site, and I must admit, I was as far away from it as you can possibly get on Cedar Street, and I couldn't find a site, so...
Well, they'll be back for a final.
But at any rate, I endorse all of the comments made.
Catherine?
Yeah, I just have a question. So I'm looking at your landscape plan, and just this little note that removal of the trees from within the footprint of a proposed structure where the applicant has demonstrated that there is no feasible alternative location for the proposed structure. So I guess it's just a basic question. This is on town property in a wetland. Why here? Isn't there somewhere else where it could go that's not in a wetland?
So what you'll find at this low point in the road is it's wetlands on both sides.
Okay.
This is the only piece of land that the town owns. I believe ownership on the road is even, I believe, up to the pavement, but... And then we looked at three other locations that ended up not being feasible. One across the street where a homeowner had rebuilt and redid a lot of their yard and then reestablished all the wetlands, so we weren't going to look to do anything over there. We consulted with one of the residents that's to the east of this location that's in the buffer but outside of the wetland, and we couldn't reach an agreement with them to use that property. And the other property was owned by that same person on the other side, and it's essentially in the same location as this. So we elected to go back to this and go through the permitting process and are working our way, trying to get through, you know, the permitting. So that... Those were the... Otherwise, this entire area would be all on grinder pumps.
Okay.
And this is also a station that we were looking for to pick up other flow as you go out Stage Neck towards Battlefield and the like that might come to this station as well.
Okay. The only other question I had was answered. Same question that Mr. Dubus had. Just wanted to see a locust map. So that's great. Thank you very much.
Just a couple of questions. So when we saw the first plan, you're showing at the discharge of the treatment that there is some sort of a basin area there. Is that still in the mix on this? Because Delansky Plan sort of obliterates whether it's there or not.
Yeah, I don't know if the other plan... So there's... You can't... You don't have the ability to zoom in on this, so...
Is this... Is this still going to be in place, and you're just putting landscape trees around it?
Yeah, we're trying to work the landscaping around it, but there's a... So flow will come down.
Right.
Come off the road into that catch basin, for lack of a better term, deep sump to try to catch some of the sediment.
Mm-hmm.
Act as a sediment trap before it goes to basically like a fan-out diffuser.
Yeah.
It just allows it to discharge out.
And so this is sort of like a rain garden with trees in it, right?
Yeah, I hate to even call it a rain garden because it's already a wetland, so we're...
Right, okay.
The reality is, on Cedar Street, you have maybe four locations where you have some existing stormwater drainage with very limited...
I saw there was a catch basin right next. I did find this after driving past it three times. I did find it. There was like one flag out there.
Yeah, it's just basically woods with some wetlands flags.
Right, that's exactly right.
There is a catch... You know, there's a catch basin further up to
Just up there, yeah.
Across the street.
Yeah.
So basically, and that just goes basically directly into the wetland as well.
It goes directly in, okay.
So what we're trying to do is add some drainage structures.
So anything that misses that will come into here and be collected. Yeah, this is the low point of the...
This is the low point of the road. So we're limited because of there isn't... There's just not a... It's a narrow road, as you all know. There's just not a lot of real estate. We're going to have this utility. There's water, gas.
Right.
So...
So just make sure you show and identify all the utilities on there for us. I assume that they're going to be underground.
Yep. Yeah, so we're actually not going to be bringing water into the site.
Okay.
There's going to be a new fire hydrant that's going to be located nearby.
Okay.
The gas service will go out from the road to the generator.
Generator, okay.
And then our electrical duct bank is this dark set of lines here, and then it's just, you know, conduits, you know, our own utilities inside, so it's not, you know, it's town...
And the wall, I assume this wall is building up for the area where the pump station is?
Correct.
Okay, and it's about three feet, you said, at the high point? Just provide us some information associated with the type of materials that you're going to use for that.
Yep.
I'm assuming it's going to be some cementitious type of stacked acrylic...
It's the... Basically, those blocks, we've used them at a lot of the other stations. They're kind of like staggered.
That's fine. Just want to make sure it's not timber or something like that that can deteriorate over time. I think that's really all I have in addition to what the other board members have. I think that's, uh, really all I have, uh, in addition to what the other board members have. Uh, Bobby, another crime.
Yeah, I'd like to mention something to Catherine. This is the, uh, western side of the Cedar Swamp, which is all of Battlefield, all of, uh, Stage Harbor and all that area drain into this swampy area, if you wanna call it that. And, uh, the, the, the field, the dirt underground is nothing but solid clay. That whole area is clay, so it, it holds the water, and, but this is the proper place to put the pumping station.
Thank you.
I, I think that's it, um, uh, oh, wait, wait a minute, we do have to vote on this, don't we?
No, this is just a.
The preliminary?
I'm sorry, this is just preliminary, so, uh, no votes necessary.
I, I think we do vote to accept.
You vote on a preliminary?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, so do I have a motion to, uh, to approve this, uh, preliminary?
Accept, I think we accept.
Accepting, yeah.
I so move.
And do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, uh, we'll do a roll call vote, uh, Catherine?
Yes, I accept the preliminary plan.
Warren, Jane?
I approve.
Uh, Bob Burshafter?
I approve.
Uh, Frank Scher?
I approve.
Uh, Dubus?
I approve.
And Art Spur, I approved.
Can I, can I ask one question?
Sure.
Um, so when I pull the package back together, it'll have basically these plans, a few more details outlining the retaining wall, the lighting, the fence style, um, and then, uh, is there anything in addition to, uh, the documents that were submitted with regards to what your, what else you might need for that submittal application?
Well, I, I think what we'd like to have is, uh, you're probably gonna do some sort of stormwater calculations. We're not looking for those to review or anything but for our file, uh, with the planning board office, that's all. I'm assuming you're doing that anyway on behalf of the town.
So the site plan, uh, review application, and then there was a checklist, I believe, that I sent. Um, and all of that is also with, in the ordinances online.
Okay, perfect, thank you all very much, appreciate your time.
Okay, um, next we have, um, a continuation of some public hearings. First is seventy-nine Forest Beach Road, a modification definitive subdivision, and that is a continuation from June ninth.
So we do have an update with regard to that, um, the applicant did submit a letter, um, to withdraw without prejudice today. They also then afterwards submitted, um, an application for a new definitive subdivision plan going forward. So you'll see that on a future agenda after it's advertised and everything.
Okay, so we can, um, close the public hearing now, and, uh, then we can make a decision to accept this withdrawal. Cause we haven't closed the public hearing yet.
I move we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, uh, do a roll call vote, Catherine?
I approve.
Uh, Warren?
I approve.
Uh, Burshafter?
Approve.
Frank Scher?
Approve.
Uh, Bob Dubus?
Approve.
And Art Spur, I approve. Okay, and so do we wanna make a motion to accept, uh, the withdrawal of the, uh, modified subdivision plan?
So, I'm so moved.
I, I second it.
All right, uh, we'll do another roll call vote, uh, Catherine?
I approve.
Uh, Warren Jane?
I approve.
Uh, Burshafter?
Approve.
Frank Scher?
Approve.
Uh, Dubus?
Approve.
And Art Spur, I approve. All right, uh, the next public hearing is zero Evergreen Lane with Clark Engineering. This is modification of definitive subdivision, it's continued from June ninth.
Good afternoon, David Clark, on behalf of the applicants, uh, Clark Engineering, sorry. I sent in the ASB plan this morning, I thought it got down to you last week, and I apologize for not getting it to you last week. I have the language of the covenant, but in order to prepare the covenant, I need the town to letterhead, but I can arrange that, um, with the staff tomorrow. But I don't think not having the covenant, um, uh, prohibits you from going ahead and approve the modification subject to the, the covenant. I think you have everything you need to, to approve the modification, which are the drawings, basically.
Correct, we would need, we would need the drawing, and you said you submitted the, the.
That was an ASB plan, but you already have the construction drawings.
Right.
Or the, the, that's, that's the official request for the modification.
Okay.
The ASB plan's really to get the lot released.
To get the lot released and to actually avoid the second bond.
The, the first bond.
Ah, the first bond, yeah, correct.
Correct. So, um, so basically that the covenant would, uh, be for lot one B. And would, uh, prohibit the construction of a house on that, on that lot until such time as a bond is presented and accepted by the planning board. And upon which time the law would be released from the covenant.
Okay, all right, so this has been the, the draft, uh, I think there was a preliminary one. There were some adjustments that were made, but this is the revised covenant from the previous hearing. So any comments or questions before we close, uh, close this, uh, public hearing?
Catherine?
You received in your package, you received, um, three draft, draft documents, it did not have a watermark on it. Sterling had requested these documents be drafted up for you, um, so it just, whether or not you want to have any changes to the, to the, the items listed in this, you can add to it, you can subtract from it, you could do nothing at all to it. So one is the covenant, one is the statement of conditions, and then the third thing is a form for the modification of the definitive subdivision in this case. The only other thing that you have to work out with regard to this is the bond piece of this one that you had discussed at future meetings, uh, at previous meetings and at, um, the site visit.
Yes, can I ask a question?
Go ahead, go ahead, Catherine.
No, that was my question, cause I would understand that if we're gonna approve the plans and the modification that we also have to approve the statement of conditions and the covenant.
Both, yeah.
All together.
Right.
Okay.
I, all of that would be done as part of, after we closed the hearing though.
Okay.
But I, I wanna hear if there's any other issues or any questions of the applicant before we do close.
Yeah, I'd like to see the covenant, um.
Oh, I'm sorry, you have not.
I've not seen the covenant.
So that's the glitch. And the statement of conditions, have you? You might wanna take a look at the statement of conditions as well.
Not to put you on the spot or anything.
In, in the meantime, um, is there any, we do need one bond, which is the second bond for the, uh, repair of the roadway, and this is related to lot one B. So is there an amount that, um, we're thinking about?
Bond now, or do we, we wait until they apply, apply for, I thought they were gonna apply for a bond when they get a, when they try to get a building permit, so that, uh, there would be no money.
Gets done.
Until they start, until they got a building permit.
We probably should make that clear in.
Because we don't know how long it's gonna take before they do ask for a building permit, and until they do, the, I don't, I don't see why they have money in escrow.
Yeah.
Because whoever buys it's gonna put the bond up.
So you're satisfied with the roadway as it stands now and, right, whoever buys it, that's fine, I, but I think you need to put that, something like that in the covenant.
I thought, I thought we did that already, that's what I thought we were talking about, is that we, we can release the road right now.
Correct.
Yes.
And then whoever buys the lot and wants to develop it, before they can get a building permit, they have to, or before they even touch the land, actually.
Right.
They have to put, set a bond.
Have post.
On, on the road.
Yes.
And at that time, they can just, whoever is in the position here could, could set that bond.
So you make sure that you're okay with the, the, the language in the covenant?
Right, because, because it might, it might take five years.
Yeah, that's fine.
But don't we need to?
Tie it up that way, but I mean, uh, a bond has to be put up before they can build or, or actually break ground.
We need to include that in the covenant.
Right.
Yes.
We need to state that clearly in the covenant, maybe not the amount of the bond, but.
Before they break ground.
Be required.
They need to get a, a bond.
Okay.
Have to add that.
So then, that it would be, we should state that it is gonna be determined at the time that the, uh, the lot is, is, is going to be released.
Correct.
Say what the bond, that we'll state what the amount would be, okay.
So we need to add that point to the covenant, so, can we get some language for that?
Done this for nothing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
So that would, that would be, uh, I think, condition eight.
Well, it's condition eight under the con, statement of conditions.
Right.
So should, we, do we need to add it to the covenant as well?
Yeah, but it'd also be statement eight on the.
Yeah.
Okay, so that should be added as, uh.
Statement.
Uh, statement eight underneath the covenant too.
Yeah, just the same wording, is that, all right, okay.
Okay. All right, any other questions of the applicant?
There's not a, no, not of the applicant.
Okay, is, um, uh, we can deliberate after we close, I was just looking to.
Well, I think the covenant needs work, um.
Okay.
There are a lot of items that aren't applicable anymore, cause you, it's not a change of the subdivision plan, it's a modification of the road construction requirements, so no plan is gonna be recorded. So, uh, number seven in the covenant, it says, the covenant shall be entered upon the said plan. And covenant shall be recorded when said plan is recorded, the plan's not gonna get recorded, um, because you don't record construction drawings at the registry deeds.
That is correct.
Number four in the covenant, it talks about the construction of ways, really the covenant's for the reconstruction of the ways after the house is built.
So the application that came before us, though, was for a modification?
Yep.
It's true.
So.
Modification of road construction requirements.
No, it was a modification of a subdivision.
Which is, you can only do.
Yeah, so, uh, that way, but I can, right, so, but I need to, I need to put that in the, I guess I can put a continuation of it. But I need to leave that existing piece in it, because that's what you filed. So I can add to a construction plan at the end of it, but I need to, I need to keep some of that language, because that was the application that's before the planning board.
Right.
I'm lost now.
It's a modification of a subdivision plan, that's how it was filed, and that's how it was considered.
Right, right. So the only way to change the road construction requirements is to file an application for a modification of the subdivision.
Okay.
That's the only way, that's the only thing the statute allows the process to, to work. But we're not creating any new lots, not changing any lot lines, so the plan that's at the registry of deeds does not change. The only thing you're approving are the road construction changes. So there's no plan that's gonna get recorded at the registry of deeds. Pardon me?
I would agree with that, yes.
But I think the covenant still needs to say that it was a modification of a subdivision.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, okay, okay, that's what I'm asking, okay. I can put roadway construction after it.
Yep, and, um, and so the language in number four talks about construction of ways, that there aren't gonna be any reconstruction of ways, uh, other than the planning board's requirement that the existing way get reconstructed after the dwelling is built, because the planning board feels that the, the road may be degraded significantly during that process. So, uh, there's language in there about conveyances, which, um, this modification seeks to, change that to allow the conveyance of the lot. Really, the, the covenant is to prohibit construction until there's assurance that the road's gonna be reconstructed. So number four needs to be reworked, and I can provide language to that. Number seven definitely needs to be reworked, because the plan, the modification plan is not gonna be recorded because it, it's only a modification of road construction.
Okay, all right.
I don't agree.
Well, um.
I disagree with that too. It's technically what it is, even though it's just for a modification of the construction plan.
Yeah.
Technically, it's been filed as a modification of a subdivision plan, and I think we have to process it in that way.
Yeah.
So a plan has to be filed, and it has to be called a modification of a subdivision plan, and we have, that's what we have to approve.
There's no requirement to file a new subdivision plan, because no new lots are being created.
No, there's a couple, I disagree.
Well, I, I know what, I know what David is saying, because, you know, we're, we're running through this too with, with forty-eight seven. I mean, the only thing that they're doing there is they're, they're recording the plan of the layout. They're not, we're not recording the sub, the construction plans themselves. But, you know, the, I believe that, um, the other documents are recorded along with that. So I think you have to record some elements of this.
Oh, we have to record the, the, the covenant.
Yes.
We have to record the statement of conditions.
Right, exactly.
We have to do that.
Okay. All right, so.
But there's no plan to record, cause you don't record, like I said, you don't record construction drawings.
Right, no, we, I, I agree with you on that. So if there's gonna be some adjustments to the language here on the covenant, I would suggest that we keep this open and we continue it.
Absolutely.
We review it one, one other round afterwards, uh, that's essentially, I think, what we need to do.
Yeah, and, and if we were to prepare a modify, a plan of land, uh, that gets to be recorded, it would be a one lot plan.
Right.
In Massachusetts, you can't have a one lot subdivision, not allowed under the subdivision control law.
Yeah.
Again, my feeling is that you're changing, you're changing the plan, technically, I know you're not changing the plan, but you are changing the plan. So you need to, you need to record the plan with the new date on it, and you, I mean, that's all that's gonna be on it, right? You can stamp it, I don't care how you do it, and get the new date on it, and then you're gonna put that with the covenant and the statement of conditions. Because those are all of the things that go with this.
There's no provision in the subdivision control law for a one lot subdivision.
That's not what you're doing.
Yeah, we are. Yep.
No.
David, David, let me, can I ask a question?
All right, please, I'll clarify this.
The plan that you have now has been recorded?
Yes.
Okay, now, there were two plans, which one got recorded?
No, there was only one subdivision plan. There was a, there was one, uh, changing, uh, the easement, but that didn't record, that didn't require the recording of a subdivision.
Okay, so, so all we're asking you is to, is to, excuse me, I think just re, put, put our info that we want on there, and just re, resubmit that plan.
Right, that's exactly.
And with the date, with, with an update, just the date changed and, and, and everything on it, just one, just record that one plan again, only it's an updated plan, because we're accepting it different from what that plan is a little bit.
Well, there's no change to the subdivision plan.
I didn't say there was, but the road.
There is.
So we just wanna see the road plan, subdivision's gonna be the identical, it's only the road that changes. We'd like to see.
The road's not shown on the subdivision plan.
Right, right.
Pardon?
The road, the road is not shown on the subdivision plan, so there'll be no changes to the subdivision plan.
Oh, but you're adding a road.
No, we're not.
No, no, we're not.
Then put the road, I don't care if you make a separate plan with the road on it, with the, with the change on it, with the drainage that we put on it, with the, with the width we put on it, that, that changed from the original one that we, that was submitted, correct? Did that change that plan at all?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Is this one of these where you would be better off, um, doing what Thad did? And then just coming back next week with the whole thing, the way it should be?
I was gonna recommend the same thing, uh, if, if you have some, uh, adjustments to the covenant, some of the language in that, all right. Submit the information you have as part of that, so that we can take a look at it and review it, and, and then perhaps next meeting we can sign off on, on everything then, close the hearing and sign off on it. I don't wanna close it yet.
No, no, I did, I, I, I didn't think you were gonna be able to with the changes to the covenant, but, um, I don't, um, if, if you're, if the board is gonna insist a new subdivision plan gets recorded at the registry of deeds, it'll be a one lot subdivision. Which there's no provision for in the subdivision control law.
No, I.
No, that's not right.
Mr. Chairman, David, we're not, all we wanna do is see, is see a plan that shows the lots around it and the road going up it.
Yeah.
That's all.
We already have that, that's the modification plan we're asking you to approve.
Right, and, and so if that's the modification plan that we're approving, that's what we need to have before us, so that we can approve it.
Already have it, it was filed with the original.
We need to have it with a proper. We need to have it with a proper date.
A proper, I'm sorry.
We need to have it with the, with the date, with a proper date on it.
What, what proper date are you looking for?
That you're submitting it now for our approval at this public hearing.
It was part of the original application.
Right, it was part of the original application, it has been in your packages, but what you need to understand is that is going to be recorded with the covenant and with these.
We can, we, we can make an eight and a half by 11.
I know it's exactly the same, I know that you're saying it's one lot, but all of this is one package going together. So just give me what you want for the wording in the covenant that you want them to change, and then they'll approve the whole thing together, and you will submit the whole package for recording.
I can give you a reduced copy of the modification plan, eight and a half by 11, that it gets attached to the covenant, and it can be recorded with the covenant.
You can do it that way, that's fine.
Sure.
We're fine with that.
Thank you, David.
And just, we may or may not agree with the wording changes.
Pardon me?
We may or may not agree with the wording changes, we'll review your suggested changes.
Right, exactly. So if you have some suggested edits to the covenant language, you know, get that to us, and then we can take a look at that, too.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, all right, so what's the date that we want to continue this to? I mean, or?
ASAP, whenever he was ready.
If you wanna do it ASAP, then it would be the first meeting in, in July. That would be the 14th. That would be the only thing that's on the agenda.
That's fine with me.
If this wasn't on the agenda, we would pro, uh, offer to cancel that meeting, so, but then it's a whole month, but it's, if, if you wanna get this done.
It's dragging on and on and on, and I know everybody wants to get it done, and, and we wanna get it done, so.
Okay, so.
In that case, if we.
Continue this to the 14th, then?
Why, if it's the only thing we have, why don't we just do it on the 7th and do